Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Here, we can share ours. We're gonna get started. I will just talk louder. Okay. Good morning, everyone. We are gonna start our board meeting for February 27th. Hopefully, everyone can make it to their seats. And we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Skaggs, Woodin.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Rakowsky.
Present.
Tallon.
Here.
Hennessy.
Melton.
Present.
Sparks.
Present.
Salfeld.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman. Voorhees.
Hottsey.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Vonck.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 14 members present, five absent. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And item three, invocation, I'll call on Commissioner Steck.
Good morning. Must be five of my colleagues read that I was doing the invocation this morning.[285.27][285.27](Laughter). So it occurred to me last night as I was preparing this that we're not here just for about an hour and a half meeting. We're gonna be here all day. So I calculated out that if it's three minutes for a regular invocation, it's about 18 minutes for this one. Those of you that chuckled don't know that I was raised by an Old Testament theologian. 18 minutes was the average, by the way. Please join me in the invocation this morning. Lord God, Father and Creator, we thank you for all the blessings in our lives. And we thank you for the blessings in our county, in our state, and in our country. We acknowledge, Lord, that you are as engaged in your creation today as when you first declared, "Let there be light." And we acknowledge that you are as attending to the details of our lives as to the grand act of separating water from land. And so, as we take up the calling today and over the course of this year to govern in this place, we acknowledge that it matters to you. And so, we ask for your wisdom, for your insight, and for commitment to govern fairly and wisely. Over the course of this day and over the course of the rest of this year, we will deliberate as a body to set direction and goals for our county and for its residents. Yet, there are 19 different perspectives at this table, different political philosophies, different priorities, and different objectives and agendas. And so, we pray that in our deliberations, when we are confronted with those that disagree with us, that we not recoil, but we reach out. And when confronted with those that hold different priorities, we not ridicule, but respect. And when wrestling with those that hold different goals and philosophies, we not resist, but we respond with humble listening. Finally, we pray that you take our decisions, the wise ones, the not-so-wise ones, and maybe even the foolish ones, and weave them into your perfect plan. We pray this in your name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, Special Order of Business. And I'm gonna call on for our Kent MSU Cooperative Extension Annual Update, Erin Moore.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm all...
That's okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Good morning. I'm gonna try something a little different this year, and I'm gonna actually pose you a couple questions to get us started. So I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand if you believe...[463.12][463.12](Laughter). Okay, so raise your hand, just one hand, if you believe in education. And keep it up. Just a common belief in education. And then raise your other hand if you, as an adult, like to continue your education journey. All right. And members of the audience, please join us in this exercise.[485.62][485.62](Laughter). If you see someone with two hands up, give them a double-handed high-five.
Raise a roof.[492.03][492.03](Laughter).
Commissioner Woodin, you missed our fun exercise. I just wanna give you a snapshot. That is what MSU Extension's all about. We are about education. So what I like to do with these 10 minutes is actually have others tell you about their educational journeys and how they're impacting the community. So first, I'd like to call up Rebecca Fineran. She's our Senior Consumer Horticulturist. She has over 33 years of experience with this county, and she's gonna talk a little bit about our programs.
All right. Thank you, Erin. So if I don't stand behind the podium, can you all hear me? And can they hear me for the recording as well?
You can pull the microphone toward you a little bit, too.
Oh, that's great, 'cause if I stand here, I won't see any of you. So welcome, everybody. I'd like to tell you a little bit about consumer horticulture and what is consumer horticulture, and it may surprise you. I think some of you have heard of the MSU Extension Master Gardener Program. Who has heard of that before? All right, who, keep your hands up, Roger. Okay, keep your hands up. How many do you feel like you know a lot about the MSU Extension Master Gardener Program? Oh, maybe some, maybe not. Okay, so I'm thinking that perhaps on a later time, I should come back and help you learn more about this unique training program and cadre of individuals. But I really think there's more to consumer horticulture than perhaps meets the eye, because I think first, we always think of Extension Master Gardener. So I'd like you to think about how few of us there are, meaning those of us who teach horticulture across Michigan, really, and how many people are in our greater Grand Rapids area, greater Kent County. How many people, Roger, approximately?
In Kent County, about 630,000.
And then really, a little bit beyond those lines?
If I could just give you a quiz, I would've studied.
Yeah.[604.37][604.37](Laughter). Well, so... So we'll go with, okay, why don't we go with between 600,000 and a million? All right? So we do reach beyond a little bit...
I don't know what I'm gonna say.
Okay, all right, so...
Did I pass?
You, you're good. You're good. Okay. So if you think about efficient communication and that size of an audience, we know through national gardening statistics that 70% of all Americans have their fingers in some form of gardening. So they're all interested in something, lawns, houseplants, vegetable gardens, or whatever. We also know that consumers, if they don't have proper education, can also have both positive and negative impacts on our environment and our natural resources. So what we attempt to do is to help people learn how to do things correctly. And so, we harness every method of communication possible, whether that's one-on-one, over the phone, serving our community. We do a lot of things online in the web. We've already talked a little bit about the Extension Master Gardener Program, where we train literally thousands of volunteers across our state, about 350 in the West Michigan roster. But we work on the web, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about our proactive outreach, and then also something about our gardening curriculum. So first and foremost, did you know that there's someone who you can call if you have a garden question? Who knew that? Oh, good. And who would you call? Ginny Wani. Yes, yes. And you know what she would say? She'd say, "Call the hotline," right? So MSU Extension has a toll-free lawn and garden hotline, and that is coupled with an online service called Ask an Expert. So we are literally live with our constituents 24/7. This morning at 5:30 in the morning, I was wrangling a question from a consumer from Kent County, asking a question about a garden thing. I know, isn't that sort of insane? 5:30 this morning. So the key is, I didn't answer the question at 5:30 this morning, but at 5:30 this morning, I did get it to one of the Extension Master Gardeners who we've trained to answer those questions. And so, we're being very efficient and intentional about how we do that. So we have access to people 24/7. We have a group of about 33 individuals who are willing to help us serve in this capacity, whether they're answering the phone, or whether they're in their jammies with a cup of coffee, answering that question at home. And they serve about 12,000 people annually. The Kent people, last year, we had 655 people who took advantage of that service. And I think that's really up from the year prior, and I attributed that to us really working hard at helping people know about that. So the Ask an Expert portion of that is up 40%, two years in a row. So that is growing by leaps and bounds. I would expect we'll be up around 15,000 people that we've connected with by next year. So we started this other program called Smart Gardening. And Smart Gardening's important, because if I came to you and I talked to you about sustainability and integrated pest management, IPM, how many of you would know what IPM is? A couple, maybe? No one? Okay. And that doesn't even sound that good, does it? It sounds really boring. But if I said, "Do you wanna be a smart gardener?", how many of you would say, "Yes, I wanna be a smart gardener"? Of course, we do. So we take these very academic messages and research and that kind of thing, and we kind of distill it down into very user-friendly, short soundbite topics, and we call it Smart Gardening. And then we're in very intentional, we go places, and we don't sit behind a desk and wait for someone to call us. We go places to talk to people about it. So we've been doing this now since 2013. We now have distributed over 1 million tip sheets. And you can see, some of these tip sheets might look like that. They're very easy, they're colorful, they're just one page, front and back. We do try to provide links and extra information and so forth, where people can go to get more. And then we also just work hard at training our volunteers to go out and go to their communities and deliver the information. So if they have a Home and Garden Show, they have a fair, they have a farmer's market, or an expo, they can go out there and take all these tip sheets and work with people. This year's message, and you're probably gonna be hearing more about that in the future, is about oak wilt. So some of you are familiar with this devastating disease called oak wilt, and we're gonna be working really hard at helping people learn about oak wilt. So in 3 minutes and 38 seconds, can I answer any questions, or? Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions today? Commissioner Sparks.
Madam Chair, hi. Good morning. I'd like to know what the Smart Garden Initiative, and just bear with me here, the marijuana, is there anything that MSU plans on doing with that to make sure that some of these chemicals that they're using are not going to negatively impact our environment?
So I do wanna say that we do have one more speaker as part of MSU Extension's presentation, but we will answer that question real quick. So one, we don't actually work at all with marijuana. It's still not federally legal, so I wanna make that very clear. We do, however, work with hemp. That is, that has become federally legal. And in your annual report, you will see there's a small paragraph about what we are doing. We have got a huge influx of questions coming in about the production of hemp. And so, yes, we are using our integrated pest management, our smart, all of our smart techniques in order to produce hemp environmentally friendly. And something very cool about hemp production right now, 40% of the clients that we have called in to learn about hemp production are new. They would be new to agriculture. And that's very exciting for the agriculture industry that's somewhat struggling right now.
Yeah, I think if you've got another presenter, then we'll just do questions at the end. Thank you.
All right, so I will be very brief in introducing our next presenter. MSU Extension hosts a Making it in Michigan Conference every single year. And this year, Kent County had a business that won the Entrepreneur of the Year Award. So I'd love for you to hear from them and their experience working with us. So Laura and Steve Sisma, please come on up.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Steve from Byron Center Meats, and we're a third-generation family business in Byron Center, Michigan. We work with local farms in many different ways. My grandfather started it in 1946. We have a fourth generation working there now. And we work in a lot of different ways with food and local companies, local farms. And about four years ago, we had an opportunity to provide a new service for the local farms, where we could help some of them farms hopefully continue in farming in their ways. It was a mobile slaughter unit, a USDA mobile slaughter unit. And we had no expertise in that. We've had a lot of, 74 years of processing and working with farms, but no mobile slaughter unit. So we reached out to the Product Center through Tina Conklin, was our representative there. And through that, we were able to become the first processing plant east of the Mississippi to be able to get a mobile slaughter unit, USDA processing unit, up and running in Michigan. And there was a lot of hurdles, a lot of things we didn't know. And without their expertise, we would not have been able to, in any way, be able to be where we're at today. And then through that four years, we've had other opportunities with new things, be it wastewater, or a different type of manufacturing of production, different species, again, outside of our expertise. And we've been able to start new things and grow, and also just help the local economy with the ag, continue in what they do. And with that, I'm gonna let my wife say more.
In 24 seconds. But yeah, we're just grateful to be a family-owned, Steve said, third generation. Our kids are now involved as fourth generation. Byron Center is a great place to do business within Kent County, and we do go beyond that. But just really feel blessed to be part of the community, and we are experiencing growth in all areas of our business, and contribute that to, you know, the heritage that we have in our business and expertise. But as Steve said, the industry is changing, and the Product Center just brings us resources and expertise that we couldn't keep growing just on our own knowledge base. So very thankful for that relationship. And yeah, opportunities keep coming our way, so we're thankful for that.
Pretty certain I've gotten meat processed at your facility, so thank you so much. All right, so we'll continue on with questions. Commissioner, oh, you still have more?
Oh, I was just gonna wrap us up. I just wanna wrap us up about the Product Center, since that may be new to some of you. In Kent County in 2019, we assisted 65 businesses in this county, conducted over 620 counseling sessions, 13 new businesses were launched with our support. Our clients reported creating 62 new jobs and retaining 82 new jobs. There were $9.5 million in increased sales, and over $15 million in investment to expand. So that is the Kent County impact of the Product Center. So with that, now we can take questions.
Awesome. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, it's not a question, but, and I'm certain that you all know this, but for those of you who raised your hand, that you are wanting to continue your education in planting and growing and whatever. I think for the first time ever, MSU is being represented at the OLLI Learning Program at Quinas. Ginny Wani is going to preventing, the aliens are coming, and it's all about invasive species. And I think it's Tuesday, better double-check, but I think it's Tuesday, March 17th, and she will be talking all about invasive species. So very good information.
Awesome. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I was kinda intrigued by your last guest in the mobile slaughter unit. As a bowhunter, I consider myself a mobile slaughter unit.[1292.72][1292.72](Laughter). It's probably a little bit different, but is that where you process animals off-site? Is that the way that, I was kinda curious about that. Never heard of that before.
So, mobile slaughter unit, right out to the farm. The farms have to be approved by the USDA. An inspector goes out to the farm with us. We harvest the animals at the farm, and then they come back to our processing facility. And like a beef will dry age for a couple weeks, or a pork, a few days, will hang before further processing. But yeah, we work, it's given some farms opportunities to get into, so some whitetail farms, we've been able to get stuff into the new buyer store, some buffalo, different types of animals that you would typically be able to load on a trailer and take somewhere, or also gives a lot of the humane handling of, and just a unique story for the farms.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So as you're describing some of the new businesses that you've been working on and establishing, I'm reminded that The Right Place has also historically identified agribusiness as one of its key initiatives. Do you collaborate with them? And if so, how do you do that?
I would actually have to get back. I don't think we're directly collaborating with them. This year, this coming year, we are looking to do a little bit more of that, and for example, like the Making in Michigan Conference, doing that more locally. That's hosted on campus, or in Lansing, actually. And so, that would be a great collaboration to say, like, "Let's focus on Kent County businesses and see." But we have, we have lines out the door, and I'm guessing they do as well, so the demand is really up. So I don't think there's any overlap in terms of, you know, fighting for the business, for example.
At least perhaps sharing the initiatives and where you're going, what you wanna accomplish, and so on, because I know that they work also regionally in their initiatives. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Erin, thanks for being here today. You had mentioned hemp and Hemp 101, and I have a lot of people talking about it. I mean, it's a remarkable crop to start with. The federal government, for years, has done everything to stop it. And I'm a little surprised that it's so slow out of the gate. This is a product that regenerates the soil, can be used for wood, can be used for clothing, paper. It uses less pesticides, less water. It's endless. What is MSU's role? Because the farmers I've talked to said, "There are still so many hurdles, for the fact is that this plant looks like marijuana, so the federal government isn't gonna ever know where and what it is." Is this legal crop, or is it the illegal crop? So what is MSU as a university doing to get Michigan ahead of the curve on this?
We are really the research arm of all of this. So prior to the past year, we weren't allowed to even study how to plant and grow hemp. And so now that that's happened, it's, there's a whole slew of specialists that have to study what's the best planting methodology for hemp. And, you know, the Hemp 101, we brought specialists from around the country to help us with that webinar, because we weren't growing it here in Michigan. And so that looks a lot different once you start growing it in this climate and this weather. So with regards to the regulations, where we don't really walk that line with saying, "Is this marijuana, or is this hemp?", we only support hemp. And so we tell, you know, we're telling growers where to buy and where to purchase their hemp products. Yeah, there's not, we don't really see that overlap. I can see that there being a lot of red tape in this first year. We certainly have encountered that in just how to talk about hemp growth. So I think, you know, we're only seven, eight months in. I think that that will slowly ameliorate.
Before we did, like Canada. So, you know, I'm always taken back, we've got, get the specialists and the research, you know, the research is out there. If Canada was growing it, I can't imagine them being much warmer than our climate, or different things like that.
It's actually a lot more to do with the soil content, the soil health. So for example, in Kent, the soil here in Kent County is different from Kalamazoo County. So we have to figure out what that looks like in Michigan and provide those recommendations almost on a regionally, in terms of Michigan, basis. And also with our economy and, you know, how to diversify. If you're, if you are already a soybean grower, what does it look like to incorporate hemp into your soybean crop? Well, you are familiar with cover crops, so you understand that rotational method. But that's the kind of advice that we're now giving out to hemp growers.
Commissioner Rakowsky.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo the congratulations to the folks at Byron Center Meat. I represent an urban district. However, we get probably 99% of our meat processed by y'all through Rakowsky Farms. And it's awesome with, again, that with the farmer's market, but also Rakowsky Farms has six days a week, a storefront on Fulton Diamond. So it is locally grown products there, and so it's awesome what you're doing to, again, to help farmers make a little more of the dollars in the cash flow of this. Nothing against our friends at Meyer and Spartan Ash, but it's great to shorten that chain. So thank you for your awesome work and great product.
Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a quick question, a follow-up from last year's report. I think you had mentioned a desire to help connect those who have SNAP benefits with CSAs, and figuring out how to make that function, and also how to leverage the double up food bucks through that. Could you provide us an update on how that's been working, and if there's been any other hurdles?
There certainly have been a couple other hurdles. One is fewer people are accessing their SNAP benefits right now. Across the board federally, that number has, we've seen that number go down for a number of reasons. And although utilization of the food banks is up, it's really hard to make that connectivity, because we have to ensure that the farmer, him or herself, is getting, is enrolling in that program. So we're still working on it. We're still part of the West Michigan Growers Group. In fact, the Growers Fair is coming up in two weeks at the Downtown Market, so you can meet those farmers that are participating in CSAs. But we haven't really been able to cross that federal hurdle of just buying all that food upfront when the federal SNAP benefits are released weekly. So that is something we're still working on.
I can follow up, then. You mentioned with SNAP benefits being down, but reaching the food banks being up, does that mean that essentially tapping governmental benefits is down, but trying to reach another method of getting food is up? So not necessarily the demand is down, but rather the, there's a barrier for folks to reach SNAP benefits in this current moment?
Yeah. This is a little bit of a politically hot topic, but fewer immigrant parents who have U.S. citizen children are applying for federal benefits because of, you know, having to put their name on record, and certainly the public charge rule that has just gone into effect will, we will see another decrease in that access.
Thank you for the update.
Commissioner Womack.
Hello, good morning. Yes, and I'd like to add to what Commissioner Ponstein, I talked about some of the benefits of the hemp plant. One of them is also the plastic and textiles that it was used for, you know, in the earlier century, the last century. But when you, when you look at the hemp and the marijuana, the difference is the THC level, 0.3% or less for the cannabis and above for the... less for the cannabis and above for the marijuana. One of the uses that hasn't came up is CBD. Is some of the hemp that will be grown, or people who are involved in that, will some of that be used for CBD? And what is the stance on MSU when it comes to the CBD use?
Sure. We, we are really on the growth and production of the product side. What they do with that product afterwards, we are less involved with that. And in fact, CBD is not one of the products that we're allowed to counsel on with the Product Center, because it's very hard to measure the THC. And the second it goes over that allotted amount, that, that's a, just a line that we're not walking right now because of our federal funding.
That's exactly why I asked that question, because when you are growing the hemp, what kind of testing are they doing? Do they do any testing of this hemp to make sure it isn't going above those THC levels?
I'm not, I'm not sure about the testing that they're doing, but I can certainly follow up with.
And CBD is, is one of the most sought after uses of the hemp. So I think they should probably have a idea on how they feel about that. Secondly, when it comes to students that may either intern or be a part of this program, with, with the hemp and the marijuana both being of the cannabis family, could per se, someone say, hey, I'm gonna be an intern or take this class, or be volunteer. I learned, I learned to do the hemp cannabis, but would that also, when I'm done with this, would just make me an expert on, even though the hemp may be grown in rows and crops, and more the marijuana is in-house in greenhouses? Would that all, would that like make them an expert to switch over and do marijuana?
I would say they would certainly come out with some skill sets that they could apply to that, to any crop. I'm not sure if they would become an expert. Each, I mean, every single crop, you, every variety of a different crop has a different expertise that needs to be applied. So yes, they would come out with some skill sets, but perhaps not become an expert.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. And I just think they should consider their stance on CBD. Not saying I'm looking at it negative or positive, but I'm sure some of the students will have some questions about that. As you learn to grow this, you, you gotta get rid of your product. So every available outlet to move that product, I'm sure is going to be in the mind of some of the students. Thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. We're onto five B Kent Conservation District Annual Update. I'll call on Jerry Miller and Jesse Schulte. Come on up.
Good morning, everyone. Really appreciate you providing us an opportunity to do our annual update. And it's always fun to come with MSU Extension being a retired thirty-four year extension educator, so I can relate to a lot of the programs that Aaron and, and her staff talk about and are sharing with your clients. So as you know, our mission is, or I should say, your mission for your district is to protect and enhance the soil, water, and plant resources of Kent County. And we're working very hard to do that. I'm going to give just a couple of comments. Jesse Schulte, our district administrator, our district manager is with us today. And Jesse's going to talk about a couple specific programs that we've added to the portfolio in the last year through contracts and grants. And so as you see, as indicate our mission statement is right there. Which one do I have to use a clicker, or? There we go. Okay. Okay. So I handed out a sheet that looks like this. It's not on the slide. This particular sheet, it's on your, on your table. And this is a major issue for farmers all across the state, as well as across the Upper Bend West with the delayed planting. You all know what the weather was like last spring. We had, a lot of farmers had difficulty getting plant, getting their corn and beans in really late, and some of them obviously didn't. In Michigan, there was about over eight hundred thousand acres that were prevented planting. And USDA came through with, with funding to work with farmers to plant cover crops. And so if you look at the handout you have, you'll see on the left, all of that area where most of it was corn and beans that were prevented planting. And then on the right are the information by counties. And Kent County had about a little over twenty-four hundred acres that fell under the preventive planning. So with those funds that USDA provided, our staff went out, the Kent Conservation District staff went out, and they were able to address twenty-one hundred and forty-six acres and provide six of those producers with over eighty thousand dollars for cover crops. So that's just an example of how we partnership with USDA. They have one employee in your district office, and we partner with them to get that money out and work with farmers to implement those conservation programs. So I just wanted to share that as sort of a, a start point of our comments today. All of you hopefully remember getting an email from this guy for our showcase coming up on the evening of the eighteenth of March at the Kent Career Tech Center, right across from, on east side of East Belt Line, or, excuse me, west side of East Belt Line. We're going to talk about farm stories, and this is an exact, the reason I shared that previous example, to give you an idea of what we'll be talking about. Monica Jean, who is one of MSU Extension faculty and educators, is going to be there. She's an agronomist climatologist, and she's going to talk about erratic weather and how erratic weather in crop year two thousand and nine caused all these issues with farmers, and then how the farmers will be responding and getting set up for, as she projects, for crop year twenty. So hopefully, I know some of you've responded and can attend, and I know some of you have other conflicts, but we hope to see many of you at the showcase. We had, I think it was four of you, plus Administrator Brett there last year. So we look forward to seeing you at, at the showcase on the, on the eighteenth. And we do have a panel of farmers that will be addressing, after Monica Jean's presentation, we have a panel of farmers that'll be addressing some of those issues. I wanted to, before I hand it off to Jesse, I wanted to finish with this slide. You'll see a picture of our staff and board. We had a vacancy. One of our board members resigned. And last night at our board meeting, we appointed a young woman farmer, Carly Sigma, who's up on East, up on Egypt Valley, excuse me, to our board. So we now have two farmers on our board, plus a, one of our board members works with farmers and providing, as a consultant, providing nutrient management plans for manure and, and crop nutrients. What I want to show on this slide is, is our revenue. And what I want you to look at specifically, what each one of those says, agriculture outreach grants. The next one, invasive species control grants. The M-DAR Technical Assistance, which provides that staff that worked with those farmers to get that eighty-some thousand dollars out for cover crops. That's grants. The Fish and Wildlife Foundation, that's a grant. Jesse's going to talk about a new program that they funded this past year. And then we have some sales and donations. So the point is, since two thousand and nine, the state has not funded any of the seventy-five conservation districts, including your conservation district. So Jesse spends an inordinate amount of time on writing and administering these grants. But we are viable, and we're working with your constituents to make sure that they are implementing the practices through the programs, including the Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Insurance Program, which we, which we renewed thirteen, verified thirteen farmers this past year through that program. But working with those farmers to ensure that your soil, water, and our soil and water, and plant resources in Kent County are, are addressed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jesse, and we'll be available for questions.
Thank you so much, Jerry. We have an amazing board chair. I just wanted to remind you, we came in June of last year to talk to you about the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. Twenty-two partners were able to bring match, to bring two point eight million dollars of non-competitive USDA equip funds to your Kent County. It was to address two impaired watersheds, where we have E. coli nutrients and sediment that are leaking into the Rogue and Indian Mill, that are going into the Grand River and our drinking water supply. Last year, we're happy to say that we worked with over thirteen agricultural producers to bring one point two million dollars in conservation practices to nine thousand acres of land. And one of the reasons why we wanted to come today was to announce that we received a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the State of Michigan to help agricultural producers learn about this two point eight million dollars. So we're going to do one-on-one technical assistance, some manure management workshop. We also received a grant from the EPA to educate students about what we're doing. So we're going to be working with students at the Burton Elementary School and bringing them up to a farm up in Rockford to talk about what are the conservation practices and how they impact your water quality and drinking water. Some of the practices we're going to be promoting are cover crops, so this applies to CSAs or to larger farms. Great stabilizations, again, keeping the soil and your money on your land is what we're trying to emphasize with these agricultural producers. And also reducing the chances of flooding, right? We know that we had flooded fields, but we also know that when farmers are able to install conservation practices, they're actually able to get back on the farm quicker. They have less ruts. They're able to manage things better. Conservation practices, the RCPP is also promoting increasing habitat, so habitat for pollinators. So we have lots of people that are interested in that. The important thing with these farmers is we're talking about that it's not just good for water quality, but it's also good for the bottom line. So we're developing a cost benefit guide with our grant to show them that conservation pays. So when you're installing cover crops and filter strips, when you're doing no-till, when you're keeping records, doing nutrient management plans, you're going to be saving a lot of money. I also wanted to just remind you in the last few minutes about our invasive species strike team. So we're excited again this year to hit the ground rolling. We've been working with the Kent County Road Commission to address early detection invasive species along the roadways. We're treating hundreds of points throughout Kent County, and we've also helped Montcalm address some of their invasive species. So this is just a little snapshot. And these are early detection invasive species. So a lot of the invasives are out of the box, but these are ones that we feel like we can contain and control, become, before they become a major problem economically for us. So again, Kent Conservation District, your conservation district is proud to be implementing a broad range of projects, protecting, enhancing our soil and our water and our plant resources. And Kent Conservation District is proud to be leveraging these contracts and these grants to implement on-the-ground conservation. And so we appreciate your support. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. I guess maybe for Jerry, I, you mentioned the cover crop, and I was wondering who qualified for that this year? Because most farmers, at the end of the year, they'll put a cover crop on. And this year, because, I'm supposing because they could get their stuff in early, they didn't get any revenue off of that. Is that why you were helping with the cost on the cover crop?
They had to verify that they were prevented planting with Farm Service Agency. And so then the funds from, from Natural Resources Conservation Service was targeted to those farmers that had certified that they were, could not plant. And so that was the list of farmers that we worked with for that roughly twenty-one hundred acres. And as said, Kent County, fortunately, as you saw on the map, we didn't have a, Kent County did not have a large number of prevented planted. So, but that was the process.
How many farmers did that affect then, as far as the ones that applied for?
Well, we funded, I think that what we showed was six, was it six farmers?
Six in Kent County made it through the whole application.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Jerry and your staff, thank you for everything you do. Sitting on the MAC Board, I hear about the stories about other conservation districts, some counties that don't have one. Most of them are operating on just shoestring budget. Just looking at the numbers and your results, I appreciate for all, all your hard work. Just, just one comment. About a year ago, I heard the Chief Political Director for Ducks Unlimited speak, and he had made the statement that if you add up everyone that's protecting wetlands and water resources, you add all those up, and Ducks Unlimited has done more than all of them. Have we ever reached out to them as a group for any of the restoring wetlands, water resources as a viable tool? I see Trout's Unlimited was mentioned in there. But when I heard that, how much money and membership that they've got, it sounds like a powerful group to be partnered with.
Well, I would just, yes, we do work with them. We're involved in some of the same activities and committees and representation on different activities. Some of, in fact, several of the district directors in other districts are members of Ducks Unlimited, as an example. Up in Montcalm, one of the board directors is very, very active. He goes to the legislature and testifies. But my comment would be, last year, USDA, just for the conservation programs to the state of Michigan, brought in over thirty-one million dollars. So I'm not sure what number Ducks is using. We are working, and Jesse can address this, we're working hand-in-hand with Trout Unlimited on the RCPP and the additional grant we receive for education in the Rogue River and Indian Mill Creek, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, so we work with individual landowners, and it just depends on the individual site. So for the USDA funds, they need to have something that needs to be restored. So if the wetland doesn't need like a clay drain tile pulled out, then we need to refer them to another agency. So it's like multiple agencies can fill like different niches depending on the site conditions. But that's a great reminder. And then I wanted to say, yes, thanks for advertising the OLE invasive species class. That will be St. Patrick's Day, March seventeenth. Yep, and we're looking forward to spreading the word about how to control invasive. So thanks.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You had mentioned the thousands of acres, both nationally and at the state, that were unable to plant per schedule. Could you, has it been quantified with the lost economic opportunity of that problem caused?
I'm guessing probably MSU economist, Aaron, have done those numbers. I don't have them on top of my head. Maybe Aaron has them. Do you have any?
Thank you. I will, I will certainly have to check that out.
But working with Extension Economist and Extension, or faculty, they, I'm sure they've addressed that through, because RMA Risk Management Agency has been involved, and I'm guessing they had to do some of those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
But I don't have them. Thank you.
And then I was just going to add, yesterday, we had a special workshop up in Grant, and we partnered with Christina Carell, an MSU Extension Specialist. And we were talking to farmers about how if they're installing conservation practices, there's less likelihood of having some of these issues. Now, it just depends on site conditions, but that's why we're encouraging more conservation practices.
It's, it's a great response. Thank you.
Questions? Last one, Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. This is more a question, I think, for staff. I wanted to put both of these programs in the context of our budget. And I think we heard from Jerry and Jesse that the conservation organization is not in our budget, but I'm wondering how much we're funding the MSU Extension, or whether we are. Can somebody talk about that?
I don't know the exact number. Let's see. Can we have you come up, Aaron?
I believe that it's under five hundred thousand dollars as a total budget. About half of that is the contract to MSU, the rest is general operating expenses. That funds three and a half people, over thirty-five person staff.
I don't think I heard there, how much of that is county funding? Kent County, if any?
All, so the five hundred thou, I think it's four eighty-two when I'm looking at our finance.
Comes out of our general fund budget?
We can get you that number.
That would be helpful, just to have some context for these.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, guys. Great presentation today. We're on to item six, public comment related only to the agenda. Any public comment today regarding our agenda? All right, seeing none. Onto item seven. I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, supported by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs, Wooden, Womack, Bukowski, Talon, Hennessy, Melton, Sparks, Salfeld, Brevi, Coleman. Sparks.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Voorhees.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item eight on our agenda, resolutions, and we have four today. I'll call on Commissioner Melton for the first one.
Thank you, Chair. I'm moved that we adopt Resolution 272020, appointment to the Grand Rapids Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority.
Moved by Commissioner.
And mental health authority that we talked about on Tuesday.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Melton, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this resolution? Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to acknowledge the team that did the interviews on the authority, on the Airport Authority Board. They did a great job in reaching out because this was a position that was a little difficult to fill, and so it took some affirmative efforts to go out and find candidates. And I think at the end of the day, we ended up with three very good candidates. They did a great job in interviewing and evaluating and coming back with a recommendation. I think they came back with the right one.
All right, any other questions or concerns, comments? All right, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. We're on to 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move Resolution 21 of today's date, revised Kent County Remonumentation Plan from the Bureau of Equalization.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy.
Support.
By Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 8B? Commissioner Ponstein.
Just to be quick, just want to give props to our remonumentation program. We're the first county in the state ever to have every single corner in the ground and recorded, so hats off. That's something to be proud of, so thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All right, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. On to AC, and I will call Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 22 of today's date to accept the Michigan Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant from Lara. It comes to us from the Health Department.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. More a comment and a suggestion that we start thinking some more about this, and I keep looking ahead to the day, probably in the next year or so, when revenue will start flowing in to Kent County for the sale of legalized marijuana. And my biggest concern when that happens is making sure this type of work is happening, that we're educating children and families about the devastating effects on children and young people of the use of alcohol and marijuana and other similar products. That's really important, and I hope we keep thinking, I want to encourage us to think about using those dollars when they come in to supplement this kind of work, because I think it's really important. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I do know that Chris Becker and his office, is Chris here? Okay. Anyway, they are available, obviously not, you have to get ahold of them ahead of time, but they do a really excellent presentation when they go into the schools. I had a chance to hear him when he came to Kentwood. You know, do all the kids walk away and say, wow, you know, I agree with everything he said? Of course not. But they do, they do reach the students where they are or try very hard, and so we do have at least that resource.
8B, and I will phone Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 2272023, Michigan Department of Transportation, Enhance Mobility Services for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program, Kent County Community Action Appropriation, Kent County Community Action.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, supported by Commissioner Wooden. Questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 2272023, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Melton.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Voorhees.
Ponstein. Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 2272023 is adopted.
Great. We are on nine, number nine on our agenda, and it's public comment related to any county member. And I wonder if we have any public comment today. Oh, the Drain Commissioner popped up. Call on Mr. Yonker.
That's a non-natural move for me, because usually I'm flowing downhill.
Commissioner Morgan just told me you only have 30 seconds.
30 seconds? All right, thank you, everybody. I found that, I think it's kind of important, because in a small office of five, every person plays a key role in our, each of our responsibilities. So when I get a new employee, it's a very important role this person plays. So I want to introduce you to my new senior engineer, Joel Morgan, and I'll let you explain his background and his qualifications.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I have, very grateful to work for Kent County. I grew up in Wyoming, graduated from Calvin College, got a master's in water resources from University of Minnesota, and I've really worked in drainage in some capacity since 2007. It was a couple of years, actually, as an intern for the Kent County Drain Commissioner's Office. So I'm really passionate about water, passionate about fixing drainage issues. And so for the non-initiated, if it floods, I fix it. So.
Good job for you.
Perfect. Give us a call. So I love water, I love drainage. I've worked anywhere from Grand Travers County to Berrien County to Hillsdale County, and a number of years for private consulting. So I've got a lot of experience all throughout the state, and I've worked a little bit for Allegan County and their Drain Office down there, and so I'm also very familiar with working for the public. And I really enjoy working for the public. I think it gives us an opportunity to be more responsive, be right at the ground level of people with problems, get out there, take a look at it, and fix it. So.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Glad to have you. Thank you, Mr. Yonker. Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none, we are on to Commissioner Reports. Do we have any official reports? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Monday, we had a KCCA meeting. It's always amazing to me what Susan Cervantes and her staff can accomplish. They're, they just are, their approach is wonderful, and I really enjoy being on that committee. But that being said, they have finished their needs assessment, and it's in a beautiful packet, one that's easy to read. It flows well, they've done a very, very nice job. And also, this Saturday is their Walk for Warmth. 8:00 AM is signup time. Am I right, Susan? 8:30? 8:30. Oh, well, I was going to get them there early. 8:30 is their signup time, and this year, it's a little, not that it's, it's always important to walk for warmth for persons that don't have that opportunity to turn their thermostat up when they get cold, but this year, they do not have Consumers Energy matching their funds, so they are on their own. And so they can only take donations, they cannot fundraise. And so this is really, really, really important, and as I mentioned on Tuesday, one of the city commissioners challenged me to challenge all of you, that all 19 commissioners walk on Saturday. I did kind of laugh and say, well, we'll see. But obviously, the need is really, really great this year. They don't have that person who says, you know, for every dollar, we will match that. So please keep that in mind, and if you're not walking, maybe put some of your dollars toward the Walk for Warmth for someone else who is.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, we had our strategic plan a couple of weeks ago at the airport, looking towards the future, just what's on the radar in transportation and our, the projects we have going on, and just trying to keep that small airport feel and customer service is very important to us at the airport. And we're up 18% January over last January, so things continue to rock out at the airport. Thank you.
Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have a couple brief items here. Last week, on the Gurnarps Public Museum Board, we had our annual retreat, and one of the big things that we're working on in the next, this will probably take a few years, but working on updating and expanding the footprint of the museum. And I've mentioned it before, but they're part of, they're one of the access sites for the River for All in Whitewater. So they're working on ways to make it accessible for all, whether it's someone, you know, in a wheelchair or, you know, in other areas. So there's going to be a few new things that will happen. One of the biggest things that needs to happen is some funding, you know, maybe through some private organizations. We'll have to do some major fundraising for these improvements. So that's coming down the pipeline in the next several months. We've worked on a few of the design options and given input, but the museum could dramatically change the look on the outside. So we even talked about the carousel and how it's in the river, which is a really neat feature, but, you know, is that the best place for it in the museum? That's a topic we talked about for a while. So we're not finished discussing all the details yet, so there's still a lot, a lot of work to do. The next item that I have is from DPW. So currently, in the recycling center, the paper screen replacement is going on, and that will be, that's quite a project. They're coordinating 11 different contractors, and so there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of steps to go through. But recycling should be back up and running on March 16. And then finally, with their health department, they've kicked off the community health needs assessment, so it's a great thing for our local providers and anyone, you know, providing healthcare in our community to get involved and, you know, survey our residents. So that's processes going on now, and we'll have a report out in a few months, probably. So anyway, look for that. Thanks.
Busy.
I haven't taken all these, there's other people I do love.
All right. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Couple of items to report on. First, the Senior Millage Allocation Review Committee has been undertaking an effort in the course of the last week or so, and will continue on to take another look at this program, to evaluate whether or not there are some things that we ought to review to possibly change it, to improve it, to expand on the quality of the services that we're providing. So it's kind of a deep dive that I'm not sure has been done in the last 20 years that it's been around, so we're looking forward to seeing whether or not there's some improvements that we can recommend. Secondly, with respect to the Lake Shore Regional Entity, I continue to report that we are still at work and negotiating with the state. Unfortunately, it appears that we have sort of hit a deadlock, and unless that breaks in the course of the next week or so, the next report may be that there's additional rounds of litigation and treasury involvement, so we are still on the brink, unfortunately. Another item with respect to the Network 180 Board, those of us that sit on that board, Commissioner Talon and Ponstein and I heard a great presentation on zero suicide efforts in our county, and it's, it's an interesting process, and I'm hoping that we can hear more about that and have some more steps that we can undertake to accomplish that objective. And then finally, the crisis, it was still called the Crisis Center Task Force, yet met this week to continue its analysis of how it can best integrate its efforts and contributions to the work of the county, and how we can support accomplishing that. That is a group that has been meeting now for more than two years. It's, it's an extremely committed, dedicated group of folks who are going to continue to press, so frankly, wait a minute, if it doesn't happen, we'll be all over you. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to remind folks that the Friend of the Court Advisory Committee is meeting on Monday at noon in this room. This meeting is special in the sense that the chair of the committee invited the task force that studied the Friend of the Court and the warrant enforcement stuff a few years ago, and it was Commissioner Saulfeld who put the task force together. So getting a more in-depth review on what has improved at Friend of the Court and what are the things they're working on. Noon Monday, very same room, different table.
Great. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So in the news, everyone's heard of the latest crisis. Stock markets lost about $2 trillion. So doing that as a lead-in, the Pension Board met last week. We have $951 million of assets invested. A lot of times, this is the time when people say, oh, I got to get out of the market, it's going to tank, the country's going to go under. So one thing about it is that the Pension Board has a strategy, and though, yes, we would like positive returns, the strategy that was put in place long before I got on the board was a strategy that would protect us in times like this, to protect us from the downside, though we'll probably get hit in the short term, we're not going to get as hit because of the choices that we have made. And I just want to reassure people that on the Pension Board, the goal is, is one, that it's never a liability to taxpayers, and most importantly, it's an incredible recruitment tool and benefit to the employees of Kent County.
Any other official reports today? All right, we're on to miscellaneous. Miscellaneous today, Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to let my colleagues know, I put a copy of the Michigan Joint Task Force on jails and pre-trial in your boxes, and especially call your attention to the back page, which has a summary of the recommendations. Let me know if you have questions.
Ponstein.
Just quick. So a few things quick here. This, yesterday, or two days ago, I had the opportunity to go to the Black History Legacy Lunch that was held. I was joined by Commissioner Sparks. I wanted to give a shout-out to her sister Jessica that helped organize that event. It was a great celebration of black businesses. We heard about three businesses that were recognized, and I want to just mention them at this time, is Daddy's Dough Cookies, Bump to Burt, and DSJ Fitness. Remarkable people, remarkable community, trying to highlight black businesses in the county, and I appreciate all the effort and the invite to that, so thank you. Second of all, I also want to give a shout-out. Commissioner Steck talked about the suicide report that we received, and then in my hometown, there was an attempted suicide, and I want to give a shout-out and to show the different ways that people cooperate when there was a person that was on the higher level of Rivertown Crossings Mall and was going to commit suicide. So I want to give a shout-out to the Fire Department, AMR, the Rivertown Security, and then the three officers that were there. Do you talk this person down for, I want to say, a positive resolution at that time, and hopefully, the victim can get help. I just wanted to recognize Sergeant Heisinger, Officer John Steffes, and Officer Roger Bauman on those efforts. Police work isn't always glamorous. A lot of times, situations that involve suicide and domestic disturbances, it puts the officers at risk as much as the people that they're trying to protect. We briefly talked about hemp. If anyone wants more resources on that, I could have talked for hours on that. The Rodale Institute, which you can find online, has extensive research in hemp farming. Patagonia.com is a very active player. They're starting to make clothes out of hemp. They've got a couple of great articles on hemp and the benefits of it. And then finally, Yvonne Dersky was, was a staff member at the Michigan Association of Counties for 35 years. She passed away this past week with a long battle with illness. There's information about her and the services posted on the MAC website, so thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I want to talk about hemp, but I'd like to talk about marijuana real quickly. We touched on it, and I think Commissioner Talon mentioned that we need to be ready for, to educate parents. As we get closer to rolling this out as being legalized across the state, there's going to be a price to be paid, I believe, in, with our Sheriff's Department. I think the impaired driving is going to go up even from where it is today, and the amount of time it takes to process that is pretty heavy, and that's going to take officers off the road, so there is a price, and hopefully, it won't be as bad as I think it might be, And hopefully it won't be as bad as I think it might be and hopefully the sheriff will be able to kind of, be able to counter that. But when we're taking officers off the road, I don't think there's an easy way, once you start processing someone, that you can just dump them off and answer calls. I think you have to follow it through to the end for the various testing, so forth. So I think we need to be aware of the fact that she may be spread a little bit thin as we're moving forward and I hope we have a plan for that. I, I, I hope I'm wrong, I really do, but my guess is people being the way they are, they're, once it's legal, that stigma's removed, I think they're going to be doing more of it and some of them won't be responsible. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say happy Black History Month to everyone. Black history is everyone's history and I want to publicly thank the commissioners and staff that did publicly recognize Black History Month as a woman of color, black woman. That really makes me proud and know that we are respected, so thank you very much. And then Lisa Lyons, thank you too for joining us there. So every day, 10,000 adults turn 65. They're able to retire at that time if they'd like. And so we're asking you on behalf of the area on aging, Area Agency on Aging, gosh that name, that you join us for Older Michiganyans Day, that is Tuesday, May 12th. Yep, Tuesday. Do you fit that yet, Betsy? So Tuesday, May 12th, join us on the lawn there at the Capitol steps and if you'd like more information, the Area on Aging, Area Agency on Aging has more information on their website. Thank you.
Commissioner Melton, did you have miscellaneous?
Thank you, Chair. That kind of threw me. We did actually last evening in the, at Kentwood Public Schools, in the high school, they had a celebration of culture and diversity evening. It was, it just is an amazing event and I wish I had been here last meeting so that I could have given you the date because it is well worth going. Every school comes with something that they feel is either important for black history or just diversity, culture, whatever, and then they have this huge celebration and I want you to, to know, to celebrate black history does not necessarily mean that everyone is black. We had Asians and Basnians and Muslims and persons that looked like me and whatever, up on the stage celebrating diversity and culture and it was really, really, it's, it's a celebration. It is not just a, a, a go and listen to a few people talk about poetry, so really, really cool. Coming up on Friday is Just Lips, that's tomorrow. That is something that the attorneys and judges in Kent County do. They get on stage and really quite frankly, make fun of themselves. We have three Supreme Court, Michigan Supreme Court justices that are joining them this year. Judge Sarah Smolinski is the emcee. If you don't come for any other reason, just come to listen to her because she is, they give her a script every year and every year she does this with the script and does whatever it is that she wants to do. She is amazing and truly the most talented person on stage, is the last, in the last two acts. Of course, I'm a little bit biased, but that would be my husband. And so again, he might be worth it yourself. I am just going to throw this out there, it's not something that we want to really think about, but I know that Adam has already started doing that and that is the approach that the Kent County Health Department is taking on educating people pro act, pro, ahead of time about coronavirus. And I really, really appreciate it because it has taken too many other places by surprise. You know, it won't come here. Well, you know, that's just something we can't do and so I am really, really, really grateful for that. And that is it. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So Commissioner Melton, some of us lawyers are capable of making fun of ourselves 365 days a year. So I had the pleasure of attending an event yesterday sponsored by The Right Place and it just reminded me what a great asset this organization is to this community. They were educating components of our, of our industries and of our business community on opportunities in aerospace and defense contracting. It's just reflecting how they work behind the scenes so significantly to help support, encourage, and grow the industry in our community and they just continue to do a great job. I'm always impressed.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I and several other commissioners attended the Giant Awards on Saturday and I sat at a table with one of the recipients, Judge Elmore, sat next to a gentleman who works at juvenile detention, who's a past recipient. I know that Darius has been a recipient and it occurred to me, it'd be, it'd be really cool if someone somewhere within our organization could identify our employees who have been recipients and, and named as giants for their contributions in our community. So just a suggestion, I think it'd be neat to share that and to put that information together. Thanks.
Commissioner Willmick.
Yes, I want to thank Erin Moore for her presentation and as we talked about the Michigan State Extinction Program and some of the funding we do, to some people it may seem like a lot. To me, it may seem a, a small token of our appreciation for the work they do considering that they impacted our economy by $260 million, you know, last year. It's just, and over 3,000 students in the 4H program, something I was a part of when I was young. So just glad to hear all those great programs for the youth are still going on and just really appreciative of the conservation, Kent County Conservation Project that was also talked about today. Being appointed to the mayor's led task force in 2016, I've been privy to a lot of information that's been done with the lead and it's great that Kent County, with our task force, are going to be doing some more collaboration with that task force, but we do have a open house luncheon that you'll soon be getting emails to all the Kent County Commissioners. There's going to be a press release April 1st, 2020 at United Way about some of the efforts of the task force and some of the things that are coming up here in 2020. So any of you that can make it, we definitely look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to echo the previous comments about acknowledging Black History Month. You know, in the end, the way I see it, the most exceptional moments in this country's history is when we work to bridge the gap between our, our country's reality and our country's promise, to live up to Dr. King's words, to commit ourselves to what we put on paper. And so I'm very thankful that we got to spend this month and hopefully spend every month acknowledging the work of everyday people who have strived for justice in this country. I also had a question regarding coronavirus and wondered if Adam could help answer this. I know that we've been already paying close attention to it and since this matter is involving international crossings, I guess, have we coordinated with the airport around epidemiology in the event that something would happen? What's the coordination with, yeah, with our airport to ensure that if someone who is infected with coronavirus, that we can ensure that fewer impacted by it?
Can I just also say that Commissioner Bukowski was going to ask that and I made him wait till it was answered. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bukowski.
Oh, I am so sorry. I am so sorry.
Anyway, welcome, Adam.
Good morning.
But just to, to, no, don't worry about that. In the sense, I don't worry about that.
Doing what I'm told.
No, no, but in the, in the question of, answer that, but also Commissioner Melton talked about just the broader scope as well as the more precise what's at the airport. So what, what's, in 88 seconds, go.
Yeah, and that's the challenge because I could literally talk about coronavirus all morning and I know we've got a board retreat in about 10 minutes, so.
No, it's 10:30.
10:30, oh, I've got 40 minutes.
But you don't have a half hour. But.
Yeah, so it's, it's a long haul over there. And so we've been doing an awful lot with all of our partners in the community over the course of past several weeks and especially including the hospitals, but also the airport and many others. And I know you have all heard a great deal from the CDC and from the news about what's happening internationally. Maybe I'll just give you a, a brief summary of what's happening locally and then if there are questions, I'm happy to entertain those either now or throughout the day, or anytime for that matter. As you know, travelers from mainland China have been screened by the 11 international airports that have been receiving all those flights over the past month or so. When travelers are identified that are asymptomatic, of course symptomatic people, people who are sick, are immediately isolated at a participating hospital in that, in the area of that airport. We have not had any of those in Michigan. We have had asymptomatic people with a travel history to China here in Kent County to date. We've had eight of them with a travel history over the past several weeks. When we're notified, CDC notifies, the State Health Department, the State Health Department notifies the county of that person's destination. We're receiving those emails daily from the State Department of Health notifying us that we have a traveler who's coming home to Kent County. We begin contact with that individual. They are placed in quarantine, home quarantine, for a total of 14 days and we make daily contact with them to, to monitor their health. Of those eight, six have now been cleared. They have, they have maintained their quarantine with showing no, no illness. We have two that we are continuing to monitor. We're going to continue doing that for the foreseeable future. The challenge that we have is that I think it's quite easy and the President made some comments about how great the surveillance system is in the United States and I agree with that. I think we've got the, the world's premier public health surveillance system here in the U.S. Challenge is, it's, it's quite easy for us to screen passengers, travelers from a nation or maybe two or three nations where there are hotspots like there have been. Once we start to see continued sustained community transmission of an illness like this in many places around the world, our screening defenses kind of fall down. And again, I, I think it's, it's easy for us to look at the passengers from, from China, but now South Korea and Japan and Iran and Italy and the list is growing every day. And so we saw in the news last night that there is for the first time an individual with a, who's developed illness in Northern California who didn't have a known travel history. I think that's probably the next step in this. We can, we can clearly identify people who are coming from hotspots around the world, but people who are coming from warm or lukewarm spots who may have run into a person or a small cluster of illness, there may be no defense, we may have no forewarning before they show up sick here in a community like, like our own. So while we will continue to screen and quarantine our, our long-term and kind of, you know, we have to plan for the worst-case scenario and again, this is probably where I'm going from a quick update to the hour-long conversation, but we recognize that we need for this or for influenza or for any respiratory illness that's easily transmissible, our goal in the coming months is going to be to identify and to slow the transmission in as much as possible as we can in the community like ours if a case were to be identified here. And there are a number of things, the President talked about them last night and, and the folks from the CDC talked about them, that we can do to reduce our risk. There's another thing that I, in, in our communication, we're strongly recommending to people is get your flu shot. And while the flu shot is not going to provide any protection against the coronavirus, the reality is, is that right now we're already in the midst of one of our, our, our more challenging flu years. And nationally, there have been a quarter of a million hospitalizations from influenza and 14,000 deaths and nearly 100 pediatric deaths because of influenza. That means our hospitals already have their hands full with their negative ventilation units and, and their ventilators that they are using for influenza care. If we were to have an outbreak of something like coronavirus, that is only going to further compromise their ability to provide care. The fewer people we have going to the hospital for influenza, the better prepared we are as a community to handle something like Corona if it were to, to arrive here. I'll, I'll stop there. If there are any questions, I'm happy to.
We have questions for, yeah, Commissioner Morgan.
Just real quick. Go ahead. Yeah, so our frontline defenses far as airports are the hubs where, that are flying into Detroit, Chicago, Minneapolis, and they're screened there and then we're notified. Is that how that works?
That is correct. There is a CDC quarantine station at the Detroit Airport along with Chicago and if an individual who has a, a destination of Kent County is identified, that information is passed along to us very quickly.
Yeah, it's no protection. We're a destination orientation airport, so we're not receiving a lot of international flights. But if this thing, you know, starts transmitting, there's, it'll be more than just airports, so.
Yeah, and our airport, our concern with the airport here isn't really so much that it is a location that we think that we're going to be getting, you know, travel or active, you know, people coming through that are going to be concerned. It's going to be public gatherings and any location that we have where there's a public gathering, and that's not just with the coronavirus, that's with the influenza, is that we want to work with those locations to make sure they are making their hand washing and hand sanitizer and reminders very prevalent throughout their, their locale so that people are thinking top of mind. Cover your cough, wash your hands, use sanitizer, isolate yourself if you're sick, maybe you shouldn't be here if you're sick.
Yeah, it still works.
Although, let me know.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Adam, thanks for everything you do. Can you just briefly explain, because there's a lot of misinformation out there, what is the big difference between coronavirus and influenza? They're both respiratory illnesses, correct?
They are. And the, the mechanics of how they are spread and how they cause illness are very similar and many of the statistics that they, they demonstrate are very similar. The coronavirus has a little higher mortality rate than most strains of the flu that we see, but there are other dynamics that make it a little less effective as an illness than than others as well. So there are some differences. One of the things we have going for us with coronavirus is that it's a more stable virus than influenza. Influenza changes and it mutates very, very quickly. Creating a vaccine every year for the flu is a challenge because there are so many strains and they change so quickly. Coronaviruses don't mutate nearly as, as rapidly and that's why you heard last night that we've got a lot of hope for having a vaccine for this within about a year and a half. That, that's a remarkable statement that we are a year and a half away from having a vaccine and that's because of the stability of that, that virus organism.
And that's, and that's, you know, good news and, you know, people beat up on this country so much, is that that company that's developing that has come up with a system of that vaccine where they don't need to make the live virus kill it to make it. It's a brand-new vaccine and that's a U.S. pharmaceutical company based right here in America.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Adam, what, I think I heard something about the, the number of cases that, you know, where people test positive and yet they have no symptoms. That's fairly high, I mean really high, where they don't even need any type of medical care, it's just.
Right.
Do you know what the, the rate is on that? Yeah, and so this is one of the challenges that we have is that the information coming out of China where they have, obviously the most cases and have the most data to share with the rest of the world, I think everyone takes with a grain of salt, to be honest. The information that we do have shows that about 80% of those who are sick have mild illness or no symptoms at all. So it would be a slight cough, maybe congestion, rhino nose, things like that. About 14% are, are significantly sick where they, they feel terrible, they have a fever, they, you know, the, kind of like having the flu, you want to stay home and, and not do anything. And then to the best of our projections and analysis of the data, about 6% become severely ill requiring hospitalization and about almost half of those have been dying. So that is the best information we have right now based on what we have seen in, in China and in some of the other countries where it's been spreading for a little bit now.
All right, one more question for Adam. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Adam, great job on this. I love the fact that we do keep this front and center on our Access Kent website. I know you're doing it on the Health Department page too, but it's also like as soon as you turn, go on to Access Kent, there are updates there, so we want to keep those as current as possible. And then I also want to echo being part of the solution and getting your flu shot. So I was one of those skeptics. I never had one as a kid and I am now on year number two, two in a row, right here. So I'm thinking if I can do that, anybody can do this and I don't care for shots, but I do this one and I even do it with my entire family. So I think it's very important to be part of the solution and it would be nice if this entire board is able to say very much like Commissioner Melton was sharing with engaging in thaw, but we've, we can also lead by example. engaging in THAW, but we can also lead by example on the flu shot. If you haven't, it is not too late, go get yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And we are doing our very best to communicate with the community now. We're trying to follow the CDC's lead. They kind of muddied the waters a couple of days ago with some, I think, some confusing information. We're trying to straighten that out now, and you should expect to see more regular updates from us as well.
All right. I'm feeling restlessness. Do we need to continue? Commissioner Bukowski?
Well, I, not on this.
Oh, you have others? Okay. All right. Thanks, Adam. Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you. I mean, it is, to go from coronavirus to my annual shameless plug for Laugh Fest, so bad humor, but real. My wife works at Gilda's Club, starts next Thursday, Get Out, Laugh, Disability Advocates, our annual collaboration. The Real and Funny Side of Living with a Disability is March 11th this year at Listening Room, so Laugh Fest. And then, a little more serious, March 12th at Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan, is an open house in the evening about ride link. So through the Senior Milledge Funds, we invest about $1.6 million in transportation for seniors. And a lot of times, people don't know exactly how that collaboration works. It is an awesome model, and so it's Thursday, March 12th, at 5:30 to 7 o'clock, open house at Area Agency on Aging. So come learn about ride link.
Great. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, and with it being Black History Month, I just wanted to add, I didn't, I didn't really want to say it, because it's concerning a radio station I'm a part of, but a radio station, it's never been recognized locally, but the pulse of the city has been there 20 years. And this month, the city of Atlanta, their civil rights organization has awarded it with some small funding for the census and other things, and it's been labeled 20 of the most important black voices in the United States of America. So they've asked me to come down there for some of the events that they're having. But that's a very historical moment for us in our community, you know, for radio, and we've been there a long time. So that was great, because we definitely could use the funding as a nonprofit radio station, but to be considered in the top 20 voices of the United States of America for black radio, that's a milestone for our community, and we'll soon be interviewing those civil rights organizations on why we were chosen for that. But I think it's also a big moment for Kent County.
Congratulations. Any other miscellaneous?
All right, I just have a couple of things. Real quick, want to just acknowledge that next board meeting is Commissioner Salfeld's last board meeting. So if you have any fun and interesting ideas and ways to kind of honor him and his service, I'm all ears. We will be, just a reminder, we have our retreat starting at 10:30. I've got plant board after this, but there, I'm told there's food over there, so we can head over early and get started. But we will be officially starting at 10:30. Real quickly, two other quick things. Had heard a lot, a lot from our board members about lead poisoning and homelessness in this community, so I partnered, we did, we partnered with the city of Grand Rapids, kind of to lead off, and I don't know if Adam's still here, but we did announce our lead action team with the city of Grand Rapids on Tuesday. I think that was hopefully well-received, but the word "action" is there for a reason, and I just hope that we all support this, and really excited to have the city of Grand Rapids push this. And I know, and your talking points to people, kind of what really pushed us was we have 427 homes in the 49507 area code that are repeat offenders, so they've repeatedly poisoned multiple families. So we're going to kind of start there, but I just want to really, again, give kudos to Adam. Adam's going to be facilitating this whole process. It's not going to be an ending thing, it's going to be a continual thing. We're going to be grabbing more partners as we go, because we all know there are older homes than 1978 throughout the whole county. So that's all I'll say on that for now. And then also, I am co-chairing the K-Connect Housing and Security Committee, along with Mayor Bliss and a couple others, mainly because there are one in six kids in the GRPS who are homeless. So this will be primarily focused on homeless families, but I will continue to update you guys on that as well. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Steck for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, March 12, 2020.
By Commissioner Steck, second in support by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. Aye? We're opposed. We're adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.